I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please rise and join us in the light of the honor of our president.
We are the citizens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is to approve or amend the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? If not, then I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda. Pam, second amendment. Any discussion? All in favor? You oppose? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comments.
As the Board of Education, we do value input from the public. We would ask that you come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. We would also like to ask that you maintain a certain level of civility. Do we have any public comments at this time?
Hi, I'm Michelle Farley, WTA President.
Jennifer Cotton, WTA Internal Vice President.
We just wanted to say thank you to the Board and to Mr. Carvallo for supporting us in advocacy against the Governor and his holding us hostage with our runs for education and our funding.
One of the things we specifically want to thank you for, Mr. Carvallo, is sending the letters to staff to send out to Governor Cuomo, to Senator Nizolio, and Assemblyman Oakes. I think people really appreciated our unified stance to send those letters out and to really advocate for the things that we know we all work so hard for every day. So, we appreciate you sending those out, and we appreciate everything that all of the Board members do to support us on a daily basis, too.
Thank you.
The Governor's not releasing the stated pictures of the grad center. Do we have any other public comments at this time? If not, the next order of business is a student representative report. Isabel, if you would come up. Our student superintendent tonight is Isabel Grummer. She's a member of both the German and Spanish clubs. She's also a member of the Student Senate Interact and is a sophomore class officer. Do you mind, Isabel, if I share your grade point average?
Not at all.
Apparently, she has a grade point average of 93 percent. In her free time, she likes to make cake and spend time with her friends and family. And I would tell you, Isabel, that this Board has a sweet tooth. Please go ahead with your report.
This past week, there's been a lot going on. The sophomore class has began their fundraiser, and our funds that we collect from this fundraiser will be used for future class events, which is our prom next year and our ball as a senior. This past Monday, we participated in Read Across America where students read, and we achieved our goal, over our goal of 50 hours of reading. We have our musical coming up at the end of the month. There will be three shows. The first one Friday, the 20th, at 7:00 p.m., and on Saturday at 7:00 p.m., and the last one Sunday, the 22nd, at 2:00 p.m. The winter sports have come to a complete, and we've started our spring sport season. Athletes have been attending open gyms and practices preparing for tryouts next week. Finally, our... Next week is Foreign Language Week, and some of our high school students will be volunteering at the dessert night. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the presentation we had from our athletic department last month, and we were discussing the turf fields. And one of the things noted was that the Pennean turf field had been replaced fairly in an early manner. And as I suspected, I spoke to one of their coaches and had the opportunity to, and he said it was because of the torrential rains that they experienced last spring. He wanted to add that.
Do we have any other Board? Karen?
I just wanted to say I was at the District Course Concert last night, although apparently my daughter informed me that there are now two because of fire concerns. They've split it into middle school and high school, and then the younger grades did another one. But it was great, and I have to say my favorite... I mean, everything was wonderful, but my favorite number was the one at the very end where all the kids sang together, and they just did a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Any other Board member comments? Dennis?
Yeah, I just spent the last three mornings over at the middle school where they were honoring all our high honor and honor students. Very good job with all of them, and I'd like to thank the PTO for really their support in putting it all together, and all the teachers for all their hard work over there. It was pretty impressive to see how many kids.
Any other Board member comments? I would just add, I also had the opportunity to attend two and a half of them. I was late showing up for the first one due to my negligence, but I think it's very impressive that we have almost 50 percent of our students scoring with an average high enough that qualifies them for the honor role or the high honor role. And that's a real tribute to our students and to our parents and to the staff efforts. So, thank you on that note. Any other Board member comments? Superintendent Report.
Thank you. We have a few superintendent... I'm going right right here. We have... For superintendent reports, as always, we try to do some student-staff recognitions that come our way. And then the bulk of our report this evening is going to be the review of our budget. And we're going to spend a lot of time on the expenditure side of the budget, and then we're going to hit the revenue side. We're going to look for... I'm going to ask the Board right now to be ready with questions, and any questions that you have, we want to be able to answer. And if we don't have the answer for you today, we'll certainly get it. So, we're looking forward to that. But as I move forward, let's just recognize some of the things that have happened here now. Twenty-four high schools' art students have been selected to showcase their work in the Wayne County Art Show. The opening reception will be this Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Wayne County Council for Arts in Newark. There are 24 students there. We have numerous students tonight for activities that we're recognizing, so we don't put their... We're not going to read their names, but I want to assure everybody their names, and full details of these awards are on our website and our Facebook page, so you can really get the details there. And also, we have nine high school students placed in the top three in the Spring District 10 Future Business Leaders of America competition. Again, every Board meeting, we have numerous opportunities to recognize students and staff. And this is just the beginning of this. We have three Wayne Central coaches that have been named Coach of the Year. We want to give a special congratulations to Scott Freshlog for the wrestling program, Jessica Quick for basketball program, and Todd Brockenhouser for bowling. We... The Board is planning on bringing them here at a future meeting with probably... Possibility with their athletes, so we look forward to bringing them in at the next date. Moving forward, we are going to talk a little bit about the proposed budget and budget presentation. So, I'm going to ask Greg and Joe to join us at the front table so we start the presentation. And I think, Greg, you have some... They already passed out the actual budget line items for review. For those in the audience, the Board has seen some of these slides, but for those watching at home, what do we have there first? Okay, start with our district goals. For... Again, first of all, our budget process involves three or four different steps this year. We started out with our district goals because we want the budget to be consistent with what the district goals are, and in essence, that's the Board goals. In order to also get a more transparent look at the budget, we create... We held several community input opportunities. We did a survey that was on the web. We had a roundtable night, and then we had two Board workshops. We had some pretty good involvement for the first crack at that. But I would tell you, moving forward, that we want to continue to push for continued involvement. We want more people to do our surveys, and we want more people to attend those community sessions. So, that'd be a goal, I think, for next year. But we did get, I think, some very valuable input from those sessions. Along the parallel line, internally, we had... We dealt with district administration and leadership, and we had an internal process. So, we looked for district input, and we wanted the district input, and we wanted to kind of match that with the community's thoughts and input on areas of the budget and how to use fund balance and reserves when appropriate. So, that was another part of our budget process. And then, we have to always factor in the economic realities. So, we take a look at the outside pressures, the... What's going on in the economy, and we're going to go over a couple of those. So, we tried to have a process that's a little bit more encompassing, and gathered input from as many different sources as we could. So, a quick look at, from the district goal perspective. Just to kind of narrow them down, there's three areas that we talked about. Number one, improving student success. And we kind of coined the phrase this year, kind of moving the number. We want kids to be better today than they were yesterday. That message has been consistent, and that's what... It's simple, but that's what we try to do every day. The second is to celebrate and publicize achievements, and we've been doing that, I think, throughout the year, and we want to make sure that our budget reflects that as well. And then, third, we want to use sound financial and fiscal practices. And you know that we've worked real hard this year with the Comptroller's Office to implement ideas and concepts that the Comptroller thought and felt would be important for us to do. And I think that we're going to try to show that in this budget, where we've tried to achieve that. So, those were the district goals, in essence, are the Board goals, as well as our district goals. So, in the community input session, we had... We tried to boil this down to, again, through the surveying, through the roundtable discussions, through our Board workshops, we tried to narrow this down to the key takeaway points from those sessions. And first and foremost, very high ranking, was make sure that our schools continue to be safe and do what's necessary to maintain the safety of our schools, students, and staff. So, that's a driving factor in our budget process. Another thing that came out loud and clear in those sessions was to work to maintain our class sizes. So, as we develop budgets, and I've done a lot of these at several different districts, it's always a conversation around class sizes, but it was pretty clear through the budget and our process that that was a strong interest. Another interest that came out loud and clear was to maintain our data... Maintain our technology. They felt it was important for us to maintain and keep our technology up to date. Preserve college-level offerings and coursework that stretch the upper end of our curriculum and of our offerings, and that was pretty loud and clear, not only through the survey, but at our roundtable. We had some real strong components of that. Then, as a part of the conversation, we know we've had a lot of interest around our reserves and fund balance, so we asked the community, when you do have opportunity to have fund balance at the end of a budget... And just let me kind of clarify that, is we take our best shot of creating a budget, and ultimately, sometimes, your budget's a little larger than what you actually spend. So, it's a simple way of saying that then there's some money left over, and that's what we term fund balance. And then, that fund balance is then dispersed into reserves over the years, so we have... And reserves are basically savings accounts. So, we have some savings accounts, and at the end of the year, if we have money left over, we ask the question, what do you think the best way for us to handle that money is, and what should we do with it? And what we got back was to use reserves and fund balance to offset program cuts and ensure tax stabilization. So, I think what the community was saying in our conversations is, you know, if you have money left over, the first thing we want you to try to do with it is to... And if you get to a situation where you're in a reduction mode, is use that money to try and maintain your programs as best you can. That was one of the first comments we have, and then, very closely behind that, other people chose an option to use that money to ensure tax stabilization. So, in other words, rather than have a real high tax rate one year and a real low tax rate the next year, and then up and down again, use the money to help balance and keep the expected taxes as consistent as possible. So, those are some key areas that we gleaned, that we harvested from the feedback that we had. And again, as we continue with the budget process, we tried to incorporate that into the conversation. So, I'm going to ask Joe to talk a little bit about the district input.
Sure. So, as an administrative team, one of the things that we looked at is, based on our goals, what are some of the things that we need in place to help us reach those goals, to help us have students in an atmosphere of higher, more rigorous standards, more difficult assessments? What do we need to do to move the numbers, Mr. Carvallo said? So, we looked at two areas I'll share with you tonight, programmatic adjustments and staffing adjustments. Some of the things, because we were working in conjunction with the other stakeholder inputs, we were aware of what the community was saying, what the survey was saying, and those things, and we agreed. So, when you see field trips, the first... We're not... That's not adding new field trips. That's the school district taking responsibility to fund the field trips. It was a big burden on our PTOs. We heard that loud and clear in the PTO meetings and with the meetings with the PTO presidents, that was a hardship for them. And we really... We really felt that we should take that back. So, that's one of the things we're doing. We're a lot... We looked at about what we spend on field trips in the buildings. It's typically a K-8 experience, and we've allotted monies to cover the entrance into those. The next thing we looked at was summer school offerings for our kids. We... In the discussion around summer school, it was, if we were going to add summer programming back, what do we think would be most beneficial or most impactful for our kids? And our focus, our proposed focus for this summer is to look at some of those transition years. So, out of the primary years, for our children who are now in second grade to third, offering some remediation and extra support in ELA and math, of course, entering third graders who might be struggling a little bit. Doing the same thing from fifth to sixth grade. And then, we're going to jump up to ninth grade and looking at a credit recovery model from ninth to 10th grade. We'll still have our summer school program for the rest of the high school that we share with four other area districts, but from ninth to 10th grade, the idea being that we would really hone in on exactly where the students fail to meet the standards or the expectations in those courses, so that summer school can reflect exactly what they need to meet those standards, giving them a stronger foundation for 10th grade. We know that if kids exit ninth grade with all their credits, they're very likely to graduate in four years with their peers. So, we want to... That's the emphasis there. Clubs and activities, you know, we have great offerings at the middle and high school level. We're not talking about changing our allocation at those levels. That doesn't mean program... Or clubs can't change at those levels. It just means we think we have an appropriate allocation. At the elementary level, we're talking about adding about six clubs, one at OP, two at Freewill, and three at Ontario Elementary. The thing with clubs at the elementary level is that kids love them, kids thrive, kids really want them. So, we're looking to offer some more opportunities for kids to extend their experiences and give them some enrichment opportunities outside of the school day. Our new athletic director saw a big hole in modified boys' volleyball, and he's plugging that. We think it's appropriate. And then, a reading department chair. That's really a K-8. I've been meeting with the reading department this year, bringing them together as a K-8 team. Most departments will have a teacher be their department chair or team leader, and so we're looking to give the reading department that structure as well, so that they can have vertical discussions. We can have progressions from kindergarten, from primary to elementary to middle school, and they can function as a department or as a unit, rather than kind of more disjointed as we are now.
I just want to remind you, please feel free to ask questions if you want to. Okay, I've got one.
You got one?
Yes. Going back to summer school.
Sure.
Do we receive any offset funding for that, or is that all on the district?
The... For our special education, our summer school program, 80 percent of those costs are offset. We pay 20 percent for those students. As far as the transition programs that we've described, those would be our cost. We've costed out the summer school to be roughly $25,000 for that experience. That's about two sections at each of those levels with about three... With three staff members at each, and then a coordinator to coordinate the program as a whole, and then some money for supplies. So, we didn't want to... About $500 for supplies is a rough estimate.
If those programs are successful, though, ultimately, we would see a decrease in cost because we would have less kids scoring one and two on the proficiency exams, would we not?
Absolutely. Less need for AIS during the school year, ideally.
More self-esteem for students?
Yes, and teachers. So...
Joe, I just want to remind everybody that out here, that when Mr. Carvallo put the first screen up that said district goals, I just want to tell everybody, those were not goals that the district set. Those were goals that the Board set for the district. Those are the nine of us, together with the administrative team, made those goals. The district just didn't create those. We did. So, I just want to make that clear.
The last one on the programmatic adjustments is an equipment manager, somebody to... We see this as a resource maintenance, you know, preservation type of thing. We have all kinds of sports and all kinds of equipment, and wonderful coaches whose first passion is not organizing shoulder pads. So, we think this is a modest... It's a stipended position. It's modest, but we think that it will help us preserve some of our equipment and supplies and maybe save us money, but at least help us to be better organizers.
It will have an impact on camps because you won't see the brand-new uniforms up on the walls anymore. There'll be older ones that are obsolete.
Any questions on program adjustments? When we look at our staffing adjustments, these are not in response to enrollment issues. Our enrollment is not going up. These are in line with the summer school piece. These are in line with helping kids meet more rigorous standards, supporting teachers in the classroom. We know that the new standards are tougher. I think they're good standards, and we're going to meet them as we did the old standards. We got to 90 percent. It took some time, and there was some disbelief early on when our scores were, you know, 65 percent proficiency, 69 percent proficiency, but we got there. We got there with certain structures and supports in place. So, some of these are reinstatements or retoolings of some strategies we used to have or some supports we used to have. The first two are math specialists at the high school and middle school. We have reading teachers at the middle level. We have three reading teachers at the middle level supporting kids who struggle with literacy. We're... Our middle school principal and our high school principal are asking for this position to be primarily focused on academic intervention, focused on identifying at-risk kids or kids who are struggling by standard, and giving interventions targeted specifically to what the student is struggling with in the course, and as well as supporting the classroom teacher and their instruction, pushing in at times, perhaps pulling out and pre-teaching some things that students may... The teachers anticipate students struggling with. So, it's more of a student-based and then support for teachers model. And then, you'll see a math and an ELA coordinator at the K-5 level. What I just said, just turn that on its head. It's first and foremost to support the teachers in the classroom, to support, to model strategies, to do some data analysis with teachers, to make sure that our curriculum discussions are vertically aligned. We are looking at adjusting the modules this summer. We knew this isn't a change in TAC. This is the TAC. We knew that we wanted to implement the modules, get some experience with those modules, and then adjust those modules to better meet our needs once we had a more firm grip on the standards, a more firm grip on the expectations. That's where we are now. So, a position like this can help us as we loosen our reliance on the modules and move towards implementing other learning experiences for kids. This can help us stay true to the rigor of the standards, and it can help us to stay better aligned. We're excited about that. At Ontario Primary, we're doing something a little different with the librarians. We have a .4 librarian, and then we have an assistant, teaching assistant, helping out with that. So, we think it's time to return to a full-time librarian at OP. Although that model's working well, we know that we want our libraries to be fully staffed. And our librarians are really partners in the standards movement. They are becoming a resource to teachers, and we don't think that OP should be any different. At the middle school and high school, they share a facade teacher. And really, what this does at both levels is it puts certain constraints on the schedule. It makes it difficult when you have a teacher only in the mornings or only on A days. It puts... It just... Everything tightens up. And so, the middle school and high school would like to return to the levels, which essentially amounts to a .5 at the middle school and a .5 at the high school. And this will allow them to offer more adaptive PE. It's also going to allow them to offer differentiated PE for students who have health issues or health concerns, either on a short-term basis or sometimes over a longer period of time. That's what they would like to... That's what that position would allow them to do. Any questions? I've gone through fast because I don't, you know... I know we've talked about some of these things. Are there any questions about staffing adjustments?
The next slide you're seeing is a slide that talks about economic realities, and why is that important? Many of the Board members have heard some of these things, but we're going to review them one more time. And why it's important now is because it may have impact on the budget process as we set the levy rate and then, in essence, the tax rate. Because a decision, and I think a dialogue and discussion the Board's going to have to have this evening, and then again on the 19th, when we really hit the revenue portion of the budget, is where do you think we should be in terms of setting our revenue and take into account what the community has talked to us about? And when we go through some of these economic realities, you can see how they may impact us in terms of our revenue picture down the road. Economic climate, it is what it is. It has, you know, we have... We're a little bit more stable today than we were four or five years ago, but I would not say we have a real bustling economy yet. We're still in a very, I think, skittish mode. We have an election year. We're going to start getting into our election coming up. There's going to be a lot of... I think there's a lot of fluctuation in the economy. The employment rate has been fluctuating, stabilized, but we still don't have as many people working as we had five or six years ago, so there's some issues there. We have to deal with that as it comes, and that's... We have virtually minimal control over that. The next economic reality we have is state support. That's our state aid. We have a bunch of teachers here today because we know that the state aid is a political football right now. And this is the first time in, I think, probably about seven years or eight years where we haven't had a state aid number that we can project a budget on. So, it's making our numbers very difficult. Greg's going to go over a bunch of stuff tonight, but that state aid... So, the question of whether or not the Governor is going to provide the same levels of state aid, reduce state aid because he feels he's not being supported by other labor organizations, NICET, NEA, and things like that, very political, whether or not he's going to release some of the windfall that we got from a... That the state received from the banking, a legal victory on... From the banks, which brought in billions of dollars. So, there's talk that they may reinstate our gap elimination money across the state. It's about 1.4 million for us just this year. Um, it's about one point four million for us just this year. If you go back to seven or eight, seven years or so that we've, we haven't received our gap elimination money, it, it's substantial as well as other districts. We just don't know where that stands. That's a reality that we're trying to deal with. GENE, we've talked about you and GENE on several times. We have a verbal agreement with GENE to extend our pilot. The verbal agreement has not been reduced to writing yet. We are literally waiting any day. Tomorrow morning, I'll be meeting with John Smith again. Greg and I will be having a conference call with GENE executives, their attorneys, our GNE executives to see if we can't get that, uh, verbal agreement that extends the pilot with GENE, uh, in, in writing executed. So, it's very important that we do that. That pilot is a four-year pilot in which, over the course of four years, we will lose, uh, a million dollars, uh, from GENE, um, just within that pilot. If GENE, uh, does close, the impact on the district, uh, will be substantial. There, they provide about five and a half million dollars to our levy, which is between twenty and twenty-five percent of our levy, which equates to about thirteen to fourteen percent roughly of our budget. So, it's very important that we keep our eye on that. Uh, as of yesterday, Dennis, Matt, myself had, uh, thanks to Dennis, Senator Nizolio on conference call. Um, they can maybe at some point share a little bit about that conference. Senator Nizolio, uh, talking with Senator Nizolio is I think our first step to get political support, uh, to help with GENE and get ideas and, and get some activation on, on their part. He gave us some leads to, you know, some other people that we can call, uh, to work with. So, um, again, we're working hard. We think, uh, the four-year pilot, if the pilot should stay, if we should get all four years of the pilot, um, we have four years to kind of really look at a way to either keep GENE opening, open, to support that somehow, uh, or to look for alternative ways to fund the loss of GENE. And that was what the conversation with Senator Nizolio was. Now, we have sales tax and I don't know how many people realize that, uh, the, the districts in Wayne County are funded, uh, partially, they, they share in the sales tax revenue in this county. The sales tax revenue is controlled by the supervisor, town supervisors in the county and, uh, there's constantly a battle on whether or not we should, they should, uh, modify or stop, um, sharing the sales tax. It's been ongoing, I know that. Uh, but what we do believe, uh, the sales tax to us is about eight hundred thousand, Greg, or?
Uh, currently is budgeted at eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. The county is, the districts are capped at five point four million and then that's divvied up based on enrollment every year.
So, one of the things we do know, and I've been assured by John Smith, that there's not any interest. There's a lot of rumors, but there's, there's no real interest for supervisors to stop sharing the sales tax at this point. But what we do know is if GENE falters, the county will lose approximately two million dollars worth of revenue from GENE. The town loses about one and a half million dollars and I said, and as I said, we lose about five and a half million dollars. So, one of the ways the county would have to make up their loss of GENE funds is to take a look at the sales tax revenue. So, they could offset some, just like we're looking at ways to offset our loss, they're looking at ways to offset their loss. So, again, uh, it's a reality that, that we have to keep in mind. Now, lake level, what, what's that mean? Uh, again, I think we've kind of shared that with the board, but for those listening and, and those in our audience, there's, uh, there's been a, uh, there's been an interest of, um, some environmental groups to change the range of the level of Lake Ontario, adding a foot to its overall height and, and, um, also adding, uh, removing a foot to its, its low point. So, I think right now there's about a four-foot range that the lake, uh, technically can, um, uh, equal that and they want to change that four-foot to about six-foot. And what that means is that at the highest level, the highest lake level, we could have some real bad erosion all along Lake Ontario. We're concerned about what happens in our borders and, uh, talking with John Smith who did a, a brief report for you, we could have some property loss, uh, and we could have damage to property and we can create some lakefront properties that are, um, that are relatively valuable right now, could lose value and, and that would be an assessment issue. So, there is a possibility that we could be impacted should that, uh, lake-level law, um, go into effect or be voted on. That's another one that's really out of our control and it's, uh, it, it's tied up in a lot of, in a lot of conversation be, at the federal level with Canadian, um, with Canadian political, uh, activists as well as, uh, people from, our people at the federal level and state level as well. So, we're kind of keeping our eye on that, but it's a reality that could, that could have an impact on, on assessed values of property, which in turn could reduce, um, our, our ability to raise, to raise funds. And of course, uh, the favorite, one of the things we put in our advocacy letter was the, is the tax levy limit. It's tough enough dealing with the limit on a regular basis, but should we lose revenue, excuse me again, should we lose revenue from GENE, our ability to ask the community for, uh, money to offset that will be capped. We will never be able to get, um, uh, or even at least allow the community to vote on it because the limit will, will prohibit us from, from that. So, it, it could be more of an issue for us in the future than it, than it typically is for everybody in, in the state. So, th, those are economic realities, again, that we have to take into consider, into consideration when we kind of determine what we want to do with our levy. Do we want to look to maximize what we can raise the levy based on the current formula, which frankly would be higher than what we've done the last four, three or four years, four or five years because Greg has a nice, has done a nice job of keeping the levy flat. Um, but this may be a time to consider, um, you know, even, it, it's been kept flat, even when we've had the ability to raise the levy under the tax levy limit. Um, that's a choice that's been made. So, it will be, I think, a worthy discussion for us. And I think that's, that's about it in terms of setting up the stage for the actual line budget. We're going to turn that over to Greg now. Again, any, I'm going fast, but any conversation, any questions on that?
Thank you. So, tonight we share with you our first draft of the proposed two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget. As you know, uh, we are required by law to present the budget to the board and the public in the three-part format. The three parts, uh, that make up the budget are the program portion, the administrative portion, and the capital portion. The program portion, uh, is the first one we're going to go over tonight. And basically, the program portion includes any costs associated with teaching and learning. Um, that includes librarians, um, you know, anything that deals with the teaching and learning process. Also included in that part of the budget is transportation. That's considered a program expense as well as interscholastic athletics and co-curricular activities. I apologize at how small this is. Amy? I, I can assure you it wasn't-
That's why we're going to talk you through it, so.
I can assure you it wasn't intentional to make it that small, but trying to fit it all on the slides, um, was what we were trying to do, but, um, board members, you have the document at your places and we're going to start on page four. And one of the things, um, you know, you've heard both, uh, the superintendent and Joe, um, kind of set the stage for the budget discussion as far as looking at our district goals and trying to meet those goals and, you know, what, what do we need to put into the budget to be able to be academically and instructional successful? The other factor that, um, that is impacting the budget is our corrective action plan for our comptrollers audits. Um, one of the, uh, one of the suggestions we received from the comptroller was to try to have, um, more accurate, uh, budget numbers on both the expenditure and the revenue side. So, you're going to see that theme kind of throughout the budget. So, trying to meet what these gentlemen have described as well as the comptroller. And you can see that in the very first category, in-service training. Historically, we've got fifteen thousand dollars set aside for, um, salary, uh, salary payments for in-service work. Historically, we haven't spent all that, so, um, we're, we're actually knocking that down in half. So, the very first area of the budget, you can see that, um, we're proposing a decrease from the current year to next year, um, even though it's slight. The next part of the budget, twenty-one-ten, that's what's considered teaching regular school. And in there, you'll see on page, um, uh, five, yeah, on the bottom of page four and on page five, you're going to start to see some of the things that we talked about. The field trip money has been added in to the building budget codes. Joe met with all the building principals and, um, they basically came up with, um, currently what we need to be able to, uh, fund the field trips. I know that some of the board members were, um, attending PTO meetings and the PTO was, uh, just like everybody else in this tough economy was, was kind of hurting, so, um, there was a discussion about the district being able to take over, um, those costs. Typically, the district has always provided the transportation costs. What the PTOs would help the buildings funding was any admission fees if students went to an amusement park or a play or the museum or the planetarium, the PTOs would usually pay for the cost of the admissions. So, what you're seeing added to the budget, um, for each building, except the high school because the high school does not do a lot of field trips, is, uh, money to meet that need. What we did add to the high school though was eight thousand dollars for our outdoor education program. I'm sure the board members, uh, it's been a very successful program, but, um, last year there was, uh, an issue that came up about us asking students to, uh, to pay for that, uh, those activities. And since it's part of our academic program, by law, we're not supposed to charge students for that. That was how we were helping fund off-site activities. So, we've now added funds in there to, to cover that cost. Um, we've also doubled the equipment replacement cost for the buildings. Typically, each building had twenty-five hundred dollars to replace furniture, um, and equipment in their building. And we heard from the principals from their input that, you know, it's not really enough to be able to supply a whole classroom when you consider the student desk, a teacher desk, chair, files, all the things that are needed for a classroom. So, we've doubled that amount of money from twenty-five hundred to five thousand per building. We also have money in the budget for, uh, musical equipment replacement district-wide. Uh, typically, we have budgeted three thousand dollars. Last year, we did not spend all of our equipment money and when we did the bids through Mr. Walker, uh, who's, uh, helps us with that on a K-12 basis, um, the needs came up to, I think it was almost fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so, we were able to fund that entire amount. I mean, a French horn alone would, would cost you just about the three thousand we had allocated. So, we bumped that number from three also up to five thousand dollars. So, um, you know, you're going to see that throughout, uh, areas of the budget. Yes?
I have a question.
Yes, Carla?
With regarding the field trips, um, what was the formula you used? Was it based on curriculum or was it based on per pupil?
Sure, we, um, based on a few things. We looked at K-five, we looked at historically, what have we, what are the field trips we've gone on? And we figured out that it was at about sixteen dollars a student, we could cover all the field trips that we have historically gone on. Middle school actually looked at, middle schools actually worked out a little different because their costs were a little bit more sporadic, but they had a good, um, accounting for what they needed and that's why theirs, I think, was about fifty-five hundred, something like that. But that was based, it was, it's based on past field trips, which should be based on, um, curricular needs. But within those field trips, they, we recognize that that's an estimate and as the curriculum changes, so too may the field trips.
I have another question. Um, I don't want to look at every line item exactly, but I just noticed this one. Um, middle of page five, there's contractual music. It was nine hundred before and it's going up to eighty-one hundred. I just want, want to know what the, uh, that might be if you know it this time.
Yes. In the past, what we did was, um, we do instrument, uh, repair and it's done through a bid and the service is provided by BOSI's. And in the past, we used to ask the buildings to take money from the building budget, transfer it into the BOSI's budget to support, um, that endeavor. And it's, it's very labor-intensive and cumbersome, so to simplify things, we just allocated money now, um, through Mr. Syracuse's budget to cover the entire cost of that and we're not asking the buildings to take that out of their funding anymore. You're welcome.
Greg, I have a question. I noticed the, on page six, the, um, BOSI services regular school dropped by a third percent and I was just wondering, went from about a hundred and fifty K to a hundred K? What was driving that?
Yes, um.
Karen, that is a good question and I don't have the answer for you right now.
Could it be that the actual usage was only thirty-five thousand, so then you cut it or?
That could be part of it and just, just when you look at this form, I probably should have started with this and I apologize. The first column is the, the original budget. The second column is an adjusted budget if there's been any budget transfers. The third column obviously is what has been spent to date. The fourth column is any money that is encumbered out of the code for the rest of the year. So, technically, if you take the expense and the encumbrance column, that's how much money is committed against the budgetary number to the left and then the new proposed numbers to the right. So, I'm sorry I didn't explain that earlier. Yeah, you know, I'll have to research that Karen and get back to you because I don't remember.
We can talk about it the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll make sure I, I have that information because it is going down, but it's, it's probably in the vein of rightsizing, you know, as we talked about, more realistic, um, numbers when things have been over, you know, um, conservatively budgeted, you know, we're trying to hold the line. Now, the one offset to that is it does lessen our ability to meet unexpected, um, things that come up, but we still think that this budget will have, um, the ability to, to do that for our students. So, um, I will not bore you and go through every code, but if you look on page seven, you can see halfway through the page, that currently the teaching regular school area of the budget is budgeted at eleven point nine million. Next year's proposed is twelve million, three sixty-one, seven twenty-five. So, over a four hundred thousand dollar increase for teaching and learning in that code. As you're aware, uh, we are in the, um, the middle of negotiating with our, uh, teachers' unit and, um, we started that process about a month ago and we have met, but we have not completed that process. So, um, we have allocated money in the budget. We've done some estimating, um, to be able to, uh, support whatever agreement ends up, uh, being made between the district and the teachers' association.
So, Greg, I'm sorry, just one more question.
Yes.
So, because you know I'm a numbers person.
Yep.
I added up the, on this page seven, the expenses plus the encumbrances and I come up with about eleven point two million dollars. So, does that mean that we're expecting to be roughly right around, within about six hundred thousand dollars of our budget when we come in at the end of the year? Or does that mean that there's another column of expenses we're expecting, but that haven't been encumbered yet that might be around six hundred thousand dollars?
I would say Karen, it's a combination of both. It's going to be a little bit of both. That there's probably some things, um, that we will still spend that we haven't encumbered yet. The majority of the stuff, all of our payroll codes are fully encumbered, so, um, you know, we do massive covering at the beginning of the year for, for all of our payroll, our retirement systems, debt service, things of that nature that we know we're going to spend. Um, not all the supply codes would, would be fully encumbered yet, um, but, uh, I would say it's, it's both factors that you described.
Thank you.
So, the next area of the program budget is our, uh, students with special needs. Um, this, this is Mr. Shike's area and, um, you know, I won't go through line by line, but, um, if you go to page eight, you can see the total for that part of the budget, currently four point four million, proposed four point seven million. Um, we added, and Michelle helped me, two new programs this year, one at the middle school and one at OE, I believe. Um, both six-one-one programs? Six-one-one. So, um, we had to add some additional staff because we had some, um, additional students move in that, uh, had needs that we had to meet. Um, so, um, you can see there about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase, once again, to an instructional portion of the budget, but, um, to the students with, uh, special needs area. The next area is, um-
Greg, hang on.
Yes.
I just had a question. Maybe Michelle can answer it too. Um, with regard to tuition, under special ed for the private schools, we've had, you've had a hundred and fifty and you're budgeting a hundred and fifty, but that could also change after you do annual reviews, either up or down? You'll know more. But you've got like 98,000 between encumbered and spent so far. Is that because we continue to pay for the rest of the year?
It's because we continue to keep the majority of our students with special needs in-house.
Right.
But there are a few situations where the needs are so severe that we have to send them out, Carla.
Right.
So you know, we try to keep a little cushion in that code because if we send one student out to a private placement, you're usually looking between 35 and 50,000 per child.
Okay.
So you know, right now, basically what that tells you is we have.
We've got three.
Budget for three and we have two students that are actually, that we're paying that are in a private placement.
So that just leaves us a little wiggle room.
A little bit.
If there's another, or some, or somebody just needs to go to another placement. All right, thank you.
So the next area is occupational education. You can see there, there's a slight decrease proposed from 1,710,000 down to 1,32,000. And then at the bottom of page eight, the very first line there in the next category, summer school, 24,500. Mr. Syracuse talked about, that's the addition of reinstatement of the summer program. So you can see that there. So you will see, moving to page nine, there, the, that category going from 196,000 up to 262,000. The increase in the BOSI services is we had to add a point five onto our ESAL. We have an in-house ESAL teacher, but those services are predicated on the number of students that by state law require additional services. And then they have to, help me with the wording, Joe, they have to pass tests to kind of. Proficiency tests to move out of the program. So sometimes we get students that move in and you know, so that tends to be a fluctuating number a little bit. And we have a one, a full-time staff member, but we needed additional support. So we had to go to BOSI's and we share with, can I not? So it is. So you see some increase there. Next area, the budget, library. Once again, I've highlighted where OP, you'll see the salary has more than doubled, reflecting going from a point four status to full-time. So you see a slight increase in that part of the budget. Next part, computer-assisted instruction, pretty much staying flat. Not too much of an increase there. Down on the bottom, attendance, you'll see a slight increase there with the reinstatement of Mr. Switzer to help with our attendance function. We've added him back as a point five. So you see those costs reflected there. Actually, that part of the budget is going down because we've transferred some of the BOSI's costs from the attendance piece into our appeals budget. Just it's, it's a better way to track it. Moving forward, guidance is the next area of the instructional budget. Once again, you see a slight decrease there because of transferring some of the BOSI's costs. Nursing expenses are the next category, slight increase there. Psychologists, a slight increase there. Health contracts, actually, I believe there's one on the agenda for the board tonight. I believe it's from Webster. And so basically what that is, is Wayne students that attend private or pro-clay schools in another district, that home district has to apply, has to supply health services. By state law, they have the right to bill us back. So that number does fluctuate from time to time, but we did not spend our full budget last year. So we feel we can reduce that slightly and still cover our costs. Co-curricular is the next area of the budget and we have added clubs in there, but we're still able to actually cut that down a little bit. And it's classic sports, starts on the bottom of page 10, carries on through page 11. And you see about a $23,000 increase there. As we stated, that's the addition of a modified boys, boys volleyball team as well as as an equipment manager. Moving down to the bottom of page 11, transportation sa, area of the budget. And actually, if you go over to page 12, you'll see that the current budget for transportation is 2,72,000. And next year's proposed budget is reduced to 2,40,000. The major reduction there is on the gasoline line. Currently, we're budgeting 350,000. We feel that the fuel prices have come down, so we believe we can lower it at the 315,000. They started to climb a little bit, but we still feel that 315 will be a safe number and a more accurate number.
On the gasoline, can we lock in and pre-buy on that? You know, because I mean, they, they keep saying that it looks like it's going to climb back up again, especially with the, what's going on in the Middle East constantly.
Yeah, and Dennis, we buy our fuel off of state contracts. So there's a formula where there's a pricing structure and then they're allowed to put a small profit margin on top of that. So it kind of, it is somewhat locked in, but it's market-driven. So that, that's how that works.
Have we ever looked at, at doing a cooperative bid through BOSI's and, and buying it on this, on the spot market on a monthly basis, Greg?
There's been talk of that, Ron, but no one's ever really been willing to kind of go out on that ledge because the state contract pricing has usually been.
Pretty, pretty solid.
Pretty solid.
Okay.
So you know, it's been, I think it's something.
Sort of a gamble that, that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But you know, we, I mean, we had built in quite a bit of a contingency in years past and we stood, the 315 still includes a contingency, but not nearly as much as what we had in the past. But we still feel that, that that's a safe number moving forward. The next area is, is another transportation area. It's actually the, the bus garage itself, the operation of the garage. You see a slight decrease there. The next area is what we call civic activities. Yeah, Carla, that's based on transportation. Yeah, I think that's based on, it's based on the insurance on the building and on underground storage tanks that we have for the fuel. Yeah, so there's been an increase there. Yeah, that's, that's right from Mr. Mr. Blanton. Yeah, there's other areas, I think, because our overall insurance costs are up slightly, but they haven't doubled. So sometimes it's just a, a shifting from one area of the budget to another. When you go down to civic activities, you'll see an increase here due to our hiring of a PAC manager, a long overdue. It's been talked a lot, talked about a lot and a need that we've met there. And now moving down to the bottom of page 12, the employees' retirement system, that rate is actually reducing from 20.1% down to 18.2%. So even though we're going to have increased salary costs there, we are projecting that we can lower that budget about $75,000. Currently, it's 1,271 and the proposed is 1,197. Next area is the teachers' retirement system. This is the one where the rate has gone down to 13.26%. And last year, I think it was 17.5. So we are able to see a substantial reduction there from almost $3 million down to 2.3 million. The other thing we've done there is I've modified my formula. I used to count every certified salary code we had, plus our substitute codes, because if subs come in and they're certified, they have the right to, to a retirement system payment. Typically, that formula has left us with excess money. So I've actually taken the sub costs out. The 13.26% is a blended rate across the different tiers that comes right from the retirement system. So what you're seeing now, even though the economy is not fully recovered, the retirement system has recovered from, and they said it would take about five years to, for them to climb out of what happened back in 2009 and 2010. But quite a substantial decrease there that, that we were able to take advantage of.
From this perspective, those last two or three items of reduction, you've heard a lot of ads. The ads, I'm not saying are insignificant, but there are $3,000 ad, a $7,000 ad, and they certainly add up. But when you take a look at the reductions in some of these key areas, you're looking at close to a million dollars in reductions. And I think those are areas in the past that we might have been a little bit more conservative in not reducing them to that degree. Even though we saw rates in the retirement systems drop a little bit. We might not reduce quite as much because we don't know when they're going to go back up. And that kind of goes back into trying to maintain tax stabilization. So that would be money that would then be able to be used as a reserve for those types of things. I want to make it clear, those are some substantial reductions in two or three areas. It's a significant, a significant amount. And as, as Greg has said, that, that makes us a little tighter in the overall. So moving forward, if we have any major issues and concerns, our, you know, our ability to respond to them isn't going to be quite the way it has been in the past. So just, again, just wanted to clear that. I, I mean, just at least clarify that point because, like I say, we talk a lot, a lot of ads here and there. But several of the reductions you just talked about are substantial. We'll cover the ads that we put in.
Okay, so is this one of the points where we're right sizing the budget a little better, where we're more actual, that would meet the auditor's requirements?
I think exactly.
One of the spots.
You're, you're right on and that, that's, that is something that the controller would like to see as well. So it's one of our compliances as we work to comply with the controller. And that's clearly one of the, one of the things that, that, that does.
Greg, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Phil.
So I want to make sure, and I know everyone here gets this, but I, I want to say it to make sure that I have a perfectly clear understanding of this. I am all for right sizing our budget. We've clearly heard, seems like from the community in, in the past year and a half of my time here, that the budget seems to always come in a little bit high. So we're trying to tighten the belt a little. Here's my concern. I understand that we want to listen and be very effective and, and narrow that gap. And I'm all for that. But we're looking at some traumatic events in the future of this district financially. And when we get kicked in the teeth financially, or actually thrown off the cliff financially, I want to make sure that we don't tighten the belt so much that we end up hurting ourselves. Because we're so upset and angry over the events of this district of the last three years, that we've come down like a ton of bricks on our financial practices. And so we tighten it down so much that when we need that cushion, and where Greg's practices have come in handy in the past, which some people would say have been too much, that his good work, we could be left with nothing. And then we're going to turn around and then we're going to be going to our community and saying, hey, we've, you know, as a board, we've done exactly what we think we need to do. And we've, we've reined in the horses and by the way, now you're going to get a 15% tax increase. So I just want to be really careful with all the criticism that's been directed at this district over the last, I'll, I'll go with 18 months because I wasn't around before that. But if we are, I just want to make sure that we don't swing the pendulum so far in one direction that we can't hire new teachers when we need them. We can't give teachers reasonable raises when they need them. And we can't have summer programs and we have to start cutting programs for students that need it for advanced placement. Because I'm really worried about that. I'm listening loud and clear to the community and I do think we're doing the right thing. I just want to make sure, Greg, that we are not overcompensating because that is my biggest fear. I just wanted to make sure I verbally said that.
You, I, I think you've summed it up very, very succinctly. It is exactly as you said, we do not want to overreact. We are certainly caught between a rock and a hard place. We have, we have some comptroller's expectations that we, we do want to follow. And to some degree, that there, some of their concerns were legitimate, as you said, but we don't want to overcompensate. And that's again, I think, what the conversation here this evening is. And, and I don't think this budget overcompensates.
Okay.
We've done some restorations, but there's going to be, there is going to be an opportunity to talk about how we prepare ourselves in the future with what we, what, what we believe the board can approve and the community can support in terms of, of the levy. Because I don't believe we can leave the levy as flat as we've had it over the last four or five years.
All right, well, good. If you, if you're confident, then, then I'm comfortable. Thanks.
You saw, you summed it up and I do think there, there begs conversation because we want, we want, we want to have a more appropriate budget, but we also want to make sure that we prepare ourselves for the types of emergencies that might come our way.
Right, okay, thanks.
I think the biggest thing is, is we've kind of gotten our reserves more in line with where they're expected to be. And then I think with, with being open and honest with the community, they'll support what we think we need at this point. My question is to Greg, in this budget, just, I saw like sub salaries. What do we spend a year on substitutes for our professional staff about?
I would say, Carla, we budget a little over 200,000 and I think we spend about 150 to 175,000 roughly.
Thanks.
Without going through each area. I mean, the lines share in the 2110 codes, what they call teaching regular school. I think our budget is about 160 and then special ed department, I think we budget about 65,000. In the regular ed code, we haven't spent all that. So I did lower that by, I think, 20,000 moving forward. But you know, I, I still have taken a conservative approach and I don't lower it below what any of our current expenses have been. So I think, Phil, I appreciate your comments, but I, I agree with Mr. Carla Vati. I think we have been able to, and it'll come together more when we get to the end with the numbers because you'll see the total budget increase. You'll see a couple of big items that went up. Well, we know we're paying staff more, we know we have other costs increase. How did we cover them? Well, we covered them by right sizing within the different codes throughout the budget. And you'll see that as, as we get a little further on.
I have a quick question about subs.
Yes.
Do we employ a daily subservice or do we have permanent subs in each building and then contract out? So we do have, we're strictly subservice?
We're strictly subservice.
Okay, thanks.
We've talked quite a bit about hiring permanent subs. I mean, it was a discussion we had this year again with the administrative council and superintendent. You know, there's pluses and minuses to that. So right now, we are strictly a subservice. You're welcome. So moving forward, you can see on the bottom of page 12, workers' comp. Those costs are directly tied in with injuries that occur on school grounds and are work-related and also the medical field. So unfortunately, you see an increase there. Unemployment insurance is the next category. And you know, those numbers had gone up dramatically for us when the federal government had increased the time period of which people were eligible for benefits to try to help people out. Now that has ended, so the costs are coming down. So we are reducing that by 20,000. And then the next area is medical insurance. And next year's rate increase for the consortium, we're part of a health consortium that has over 42, 42 school districts in it. In the Wayne Friglax area, plus down in a little bit in the southern tier. And the increase there is 8.7%. So currently, we budget 5.6 million. Next year's budget is a little over $6 million. But we are able to reduce dental, dental costs have held steady, so we're actually lowering that by 15,000. And so you can see the total program component is going from 35,444 to 36 million. So you saw a 400, over a $450,000 increase in 2110. You saw a $300,000 increase in the special ed codes. But then you saw the large offset for the teacher retirement system, which helped offset some of those increases. But we are still increasing money that's going directly onto our instructional program. Any questions on that portion?
Greg, what's the percentage? Our programming should be at least 78?
Well, we try to spend, we try to be at least 70%. We're at 79%, Carla.
Okay, and then include this one too? This one will be, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Greg, how much longer do you think the budget discussion is going to take? How much?
I could go faster if you want.
No, I do not want you to go faster. I, I was asking, we have students in the audience. No, I do not want you to go faster. I was asking, we have students in the audience, I think, who need to have their participation in government.
I would say probably, the program part is done. I would say maybe another 20 minutes.
Okay. Why don't we take a break, allow these students time to go home and do their homework? So they don't go in and tell their teachers, I was at a board meeting last night, couldn't do my homework. We'll take a short break. I think we're ready, Mr. Adseff.
Thank you.
So moving on in the budget presentation to the second part of the three-part budget, and this is the administrative component. And the administrative component includes anything to do with managing and running the school district?
No, we're on administrative. Back to page one.
Back to page one. So once again, remembering our theme of right sizing our budget, a perfect example starts with the very first category, the board of education. Currently, the budget for the board is 37,515. And on the contractual line, you can see we had a budget of 25,625. That included the cost when we were content, when we had talked about implementing the Let's Talk piece to our website. And I know that we discontinued it at the end of last year, but the budget was already set. So obviously, we no longer need that. So that's been reduced. Therefore, you see the, you know, substantial decrease in that part of the budget. Next area, district clerk, Mrs. Reitz, being able to serve the board as the clerk of the board. Once again, we're reducing some of the costs there. District meeting, that covers our public vote, the costs associated with our budget vote. And we've got a slight decrease there. Next area down is the chief school administrator. And we're actually reducing that part of the budget as well by about $15,000. The next area that falls under administration is the business office. You see a slight increase planned for the business office. The next area is internal auditing. Once again, a slight increase there. That covers EFP Rotenberg, Ray Wager, as well as our extra classroom people are in that part of the budget. The treasurer is the next part down. And you see an increase there. We'd had a staff member retire. And then we had projected what the replacement would be. And the candidate that we actually hired came in with experience. So you see that portion of the budget being right sized upward to reflect the salary that was paid to the new treasurer. Tax collector, we still collect our own tax bills. That part of the budget's staying pretty much the same. Purchasing, no increase there. Next area of right sizing legal fees. We used to budget, I think it was 35,000. Then our legal fees jumped dramatically due to some legal issues that the district was dealing with. So we had to up the budget to cover those costs. So the current budget is 105. I feel confident that we are going to come in under budget. And I am projecting a budget next year of 85,000. And I still think that that's a decent amount to cover our costs. I've talked with Joe Shields, and his company is not looking for a rate increase for next year.
Greg, what, we've spent 30, almost 38,000 this year?
Carla, we spent, yes, almost 38,000. And we have another, we have the whole code encumbered.
Just in case.
Right. But, you know, what I did was I extrapolated out based on what we had spent to date, what the whole year would be. And I think it came in, in the high 60s, maybe around 70,000. So I thought 85 was a good number.
Thank you.
Moving forward.
A couple of years go by, and have all, yeah, so I have the last small number. That number can go down over the next couple of years. We hopefully expect that.
Yes. Yes, I would, yeah. Yeah. I mean, part of the increase was when we went, when Wayne Vanderbar retired. Wayne was a one-man operation. And we did an RFP and looked for services to replace Wayne. Went with a law firm with kind of really more structured to today's needs where you have multiple lawyers. So that structure itself increases the price somewhat. And then you take on top of that whatever, you know, legal issues that the district might be encountering, you know, that adds to that. So you have a couple of factors there. Next area of the budget is the Office of Human Resources. And you see a very slight increase there. Records management is the next area. And you see a fairly sizable increase there. Kathy Reitz has taken that over. And she's been working diligently with BOSIs. They have BOSIs come in and help us with getting our records area up to date, cleaning out stuff we don't need, getting everything that should be microfilmed, microfilmed. And so we've allocated quite a bit of money to BOSIs because Kathy's been working with them and getting that cleaned up. So you do see an increase there. Public information, this is Mrs. Gebhardt's area of the budget. See a slight increase proposed there. Central stores is the next area. We are fortunate to have central receiving, very slight increase proposed there. The next area is printing and mailing. And you see a, actually a reduction there of about $25,000. And then the next area is our computer technology department. Actually, that appears in two parts of the budget. The instructional portion appears in the program piece. The infrastructure and the staffing of our tech department appears under the 1680 code. So you see a fairly sizable increase here. Part of that is attributable to our technology plan moving forward. We have a technology committee. And right now, some of that is what we call the Smart Schools Initiative. Couple of years ago, in the state budget that was approved, where the state was going to borrow a huge amount of money to allocate to school districts to help with infrastructure. Those funds, you can't access those funds yet. We can start spending that money next year. But it actually works similar to a BOSIs where you spend the money one year, and you get the reimbursement through the Smart Schools money the year after. So you're seeing the beginning phases of our Smart Schools plan included currently in there, as well as we had taken some of the BOSIs costs from guidance and attendance, and moved them under buyer because she really supervises those areas. And we used to do cost accounting and spread them out. And it's really easier to put them under the one department.
Billion-dollar technology.
Yep. And it could be used then as for infrastructure, security, UPK.
Security too.
Yeah. Yep. Yep.
So Greg.
So we did finally, oh, sorry. We did finally get, I know when they first passed that they didn't know what they were going to do with it.
Right. Well, they're still, they're still finalizing the guidelines, which is kind of typical for the state. Because I think they passed it about a year ago.
Yep.
And they're still finalizing the guidelines. We have some information. But, and, you know, there's a lot of criteria. The plan has to be developed with community input. And, you know, that's why I think Joe and Barb spoke earlier to the board during the year about the technology committee and who was going to be on it, and what their, what their charge was and whatnot. So.
Have they given us any indication on how much we might get out of that? Or, oh, they have?
About 1.4 million can be spent over multiple years. And so it's not, it may be spent in a year.
In one year.
Yeah. So I think, three, over three or four years.
Right.
But there still is a lot more clarification and guidance coming out. We expect to see more later this year, more guidance documents.
Any idea under safety if it can be used for cameras for buses? I didn't know about cameras for buses, but clearly for cameras for buildings.
Okay.
So in moving forward with our security plan, working with our security officer, I mean, that's part of it. So part of it is facility related. Part of it for us is also instructional related. You know, Joe's working with Barb and the team on the instructional pieces, the looking at the cloud and some of the other, right, some of the other things that'll, that'll help the teachers with instruction.
Greg, so I'm just, there's roughly 200,000 increase on this BOSI services line. Is, how much of that is part of this beginning of the IT, the Adbal part? And how much is just an increase in our spending? Do we know?
I believe about 150,000 is, I think, about the first part of the Smart Schools plan.
Thank you.
And we can, we can definitely check that number. But I think.
Yeah, a little less.
A little less.
We can check that.
Yeah. I think it's around 150, though, Kim, is the first wave of that. The one thing we have to be a little bit careful of is it's kind of like the jobs money. It's a big infusion of money. And, you know, it's great to spend it on infrastructure. But when an infrastructure becomes obsolete, you got to be able to replace it. And, you know, 1.4, I mean, we, we don't buy a million dollars a year in technology equipment. I mean, typically, we're 250 to 300,000. So we have to be very careful. And I know the committee's looking at that on how they structure the plan so that we don't put ourselves into a tough position. And then moving forward, there's some insurance costs there, board membership dues, assessments on school property, those are our water bills. We're actually reducing that a little bit. BOSIs administrative costs are staying the same. And then moving down to Joe's area of the budget, curriculum and instruction.
Greg, what is assessment on school property?
Those are water bills, Carla.
Oh, that's the water bill?
Yeah.
That's the water bill?
No. No, I don't know why they use that terminology. It's a state code terminology piece. So you see the area of curriculum instruction. Once again, we've allocated 95,000 for curriculum writing to help us with the Common Core and the SLOs and all the different instructional initiatives that we work on. So you do see a slight increase there. And it's mostly under BOSIs. Part of that is the library. What's the increase in BOSIs for you?
We're going to be using some BOSI services to support some initiatives that we're doing next year on writing. So we're looking at, it's called shared service. And it allows us about 11 staff development days, two must be over the summer. So we're looking at having a couple of BOSI trainers come support us in our curriculum writing, particularly infusing writing into our curriculum, K-12. So it'll be a K-12 in Dallas. So that's, it's one, one cost.
Our BOSIs aid ratio is greater than our state aid ratio. So anytime we can run things through BOSIs, we in essence save money over the actual costs.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So then the next area of the budget is supervision. This covers all the principals for the five different buildings. And I want to just bring your attention to the very first line there for the high school. You see a fairly sizable increase there of about 92,000. And basically what, when I came to Wayne, I'm not sure why, but they always had the athletic director as part of the high school staff budget. I had never changed that. But in the theme of right sizing and putting things in the right area, I've now moved our athletic director into supervision instead of teaching. So you see that big increase is attributable to just shifting him out of the teaching code in the high school into the supervision code, which is where he really belongs. I think once upon a time when it was a shared position, probably why they had it in the teaching code, because, and Ron, you can help me with this. I think back in Ron's day, it was a shared position or teacher on special assignment.
I'm not.
Yeah. But anyway, so I think that's why it was like that. And, you know.
Ron was probably doing it.
Right.
No, I was not doing it. But it predates Chuck.
Right. Right. So, so we're not giving the high school staff that big of an increase. It's actually a set of three people that covers four salaries. The principal, the two assistant principals, and now the athletic director. But they see the cost there to run our school building offices. So you see a, an increase in that part of the budget. And so for the administrative component, moving on to page four there, see currently it's at 4.3 million. Next year's proposed is 4.7 million. Moving on, the third part of the budget is the capital portion. And this covers any costs with the upkeep and maintenance of district facilities. It also includes the debt service costs. And if you move, turn to page 13 on your report, we start with the maintenance department. And I've got some codes highlighted there for you. You can see the first one, natural gas. Currently, our budget is 300,000. Next year, we're proposing an $80,000 decrease in the budget. Part of that is right sizing. Part of it is also the effects of our energy performance contract. So it's a factor of both. But, you know, we talked about areas of the budget that we were reducing. So the next line down, electric, currently 475. We're reducing that to 394,000 proposed for next year. Yes, Carla?
I know a few years ago, there was the big push to get like, all the coffee pots and all the extra little refrigerators and all that stuff. And we still go with those guidelines, right? Not only for fire reasons, but for, you know, cost of running that stuff, right?
We do.
Okay. So somebody checks it every now and then?
Yeah. I mean, it's really something that the building principals, Bob Miller.
Fire inspector?
Fire inspector, you know. I mean, we don't walk around on a daily basis.
No, I, no, I know.
We still stay within the criteria. I mean, one of the things that we're doing now, part of our energy performance contract, is we have a program that actually shuts up all our computers at 6 o'clock. We tried doing it by word of mouth.
Did you hear about that? Well, we've experienced how the buildings go on night heat.
That's why you see so many of the board members with coats on.
So we do our best to try to save those taxpayer dollars. So you can see us, you know, so the first part of the Bob Miller's portion of the budget, currently 1,860,000. Next year's proposed is 1,695,000. So a pretty substantial decrease there. But once again, it's just right sizing and, you know, more realistic numbers. The next part is the actual maintenance portion of the budget. And I highlighted the building equipment repair code. This is actually what we call our local facilities plan. Every year, Bob meets with the building principals and talks about needs for their building. The past couple of years, we've had the capital project going on. So there were certain things that were being covered under the project that we didn't have the budget for locally. Now that the project is ending, we have to get back to our ceiling, you know, our driveway ceiling and different things. So you do see an increase in that portion of the budget of about, just a little under $80,000 to get us, and that's typically where we were before the capital project. Typically, we're anywhere from 175,000 to 250,000 in our local plan.
Greg, I just, this is kind of off, but I see snow removal, roof maintenance. I'm just curious, with everybody experiencing so much difficulty with roof, ice dams, and people's leaking in their house and all that, how have our buildings fared during all of this?
Very well.
New roofs are doing well?
Doing well.
The district is doing real well. Greg's personal.
I could show you some pictures after the meeting.
Yeah. I think if you ask, it's everywhere. It's so many people. I've never seen anything like it.
Last night on my way home, I stopped at Home Depot and bought a 32-gallon brute plastic garbage can because I had so much water coming in my dining room ceiling.
Oh.
So, anyway, we digress. So going to page 14, you can see even with the fairly sizable increase in the local facilities plan, the maintenance budget is only going up $41,000. So the other part of the capital is our debt service. And this is an area where once upon a time, we had a lot of our fund balance money built in. And that was a criticism that we received. So these are actual debt service costs that you see. I do want to point out to you, though, that the bond anticipation note, or normally the acronym is a ban, to fund our capital project, we did a ban for the first part. We planned on actually in June going out and do permanent financing. But we're not sure we're going to have the project done by then. So we're actually going to roll the ban over. When you do that, you're required to make a principal payment. So you see that currently, this year, we did not have to make a principal payment, just an interest payment. But next year, we have to make an interest and a principal payment. So you see a $712,000 increase to our debt, which is the first debt service payment for the current project that is finishing. And then next year, we will move to permanent financing, you know, once the project's completed, then we know exactly what we spent. So when you look at the capital component there, halfway through the page, you see it's currently at 4.6. Next year's proposed is a little over $5 million. So this chart shows you just a So this chart shows you just a summary of what we've talked about. It gives you what the current costs for the three parts are, and our current budget stands at forty-four million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, oh, sixty. Right now, draft one, the proposed budget, forty-five million, eight eighty-four, seven eighty. You can see through the pie chart how that money is, Carla, going back to your question, seventy-nine percent of those costs are attributable to teaching and learning. We always try to make sure at least seventy percent, that's been our benchmark, so we are in excess of that. So at this stage, we are proposing an increase of one point four million, and I had it written down, I believe that's three point five percent. I had it written down on one of my pages, and I've got so many documents from time that I lost. But it's about a three and a half percent, I think, or three point seven percent spending increase.
What was the total, one million, what then?
One million, four thirteen.
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty is the proposed increase.
I know that one point four million, four hundred and seven hundred and eighty on that first debt service.
Correct, correct. So as I stated before, you kind of, now that you see the totals, so you had a four hundred thousand dollar increase in health insurance, and you had a seven hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase in debt service. Those two numbers together are about one point one million. We're still paying staff more. Typically, a district our size, when we settle our contracts, our salary increases range around eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand dollars. So, and we've added the positions that we've talked about, the summer school, the field trip funding, all those things. Those things have been funded by the right sizing of other items within the budget. Because if you looked at just the increases, it would be much more than one point four million.
That, the three-part budget summary there, you should have marked it draft. It is a draft.
It is a draft.
If you write that on there, please, or just note of it.
Yes, everything we're talking about tonight is a draft.
When we have the public hearing on the budget.
Yes.
I think it would be worth bringing into that what the total value of the increases that we're looking at, so that we, I think it's, it's much easier for people to visualize if you say, okay, we added this much value, but it's going to end up costing this much because we took these reductions.
Yes, yep, I agree, Karen. So now we'll show you our estimated revenues, and consistent, you know, it's in a chart format here. What you see in the first column is our two thousand and fourteen budgeted numbers for the different categories, state aid, other really encompasses our pilot payments, as well as any transfers from our reserve funds. In your packet there, you have a more detailed sheet than this, but I'm just using the totals. The fund balance number, two point seven, we, anything we had left over last year for the last two years, we returned to the taxpayers. We felt that, based on where we were, we were healthy financially, that was what we needed to do, and I think we're all in agreement of that. Our levy currently is nineteen point six million dollars to our total budget of forty-four million, four seventy-one. And now you can see our proposed revenues at this stage, moving forward. And I could tell you, what I did on state aid, and you can see it on your sheet that's included in your packet, I have not increased what on your packet is called basic formula or the foundation aid, because right now, as you know, the governor has not released any information. What he has said is that if legislature doesn't go along with his education package, aid would go up one point seven million or billion, whatever that number is. And I believe what's meant by that is, like, building aid, BOSI's aid, some of those aids are in law. So for him to say that he's not going to give us any more money, they would have to actually change the law. Or the other thing they could do is they could add a second deficit gap elimination line. They could let the formulas run, which would generate more money to us because of our building project, but then they could take it away as a deduct to keep us where we are currently this year. But so far, what we've done for state aid, we've kept the foundation piece flat, and then the other categories of building aid, BOSI's aid, and the textbook and software, I've taken current law plus the numbers we did this summer and use those numbers in this part of the budget. So you do see, without a foundation increase, if current law were to move forward, our building aid alone would drive our state aid up to almost fifteen million dollars. The other category is going up, and in this year's budget, we used three fifty, five hundred, used about five hundred and fifty thousand from our reserve funds to help fund the budget. Next year, we are proposing using almost one point seven million, and you can see it on that sheet that you guys are all holding there. The workers' comp, we're proposing using almost three hundred and sixty thousand. Unemployment, sixty-five thousand, and the ERS reserve, one point, almost one point two million. Those are the entire costs of those expenses in the budget. So we're bringing in the entire cost of that from our reserves to offset that.
And those would all satisfy the state comptroller?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And Greg, and it would still leave those, even if you transfer out, are those reserves adequately funded?
Yes, yes. So currently, our ERS reserve is at, I think, five and a half million dollars. So even if you take out a million, two, we will still have about a little over four million dollars in there. I mean, the reserves are there to use, and, you know, this is a pretty aggressive proposal currently. I think one of the things moving forward that we would talk about is if we don't have better information, we would continue to propose this, and then if our budget's already in place, and then the state budget gets resolved and our aid numbers change after we've already adopted a budget, we could modify the amount we're taking out of reserves, possibly, if our state aid goes up. That's one potential way of trying to deal with that.
Can we also do it the other way, if our state aid were to go down after our budget was adopted?
Yes.
But then that would leave us.
And I want to talk to Ray Wager, because I'd want to see how we could pull in, without being criticized and an audit comment, more, you know, because right now, we're pulling in exactly what we're budgeting.
Okay.
And I got to find out if there's a way for us, if the aid goes down, for us to pull in more than what we're budgeting. I'm not sure if that's illegal. I don't know, I want to verify that before.
We talked about that a little bit before, that option. We need to get just some better information on it. And unfortunately, we have to get the information from Ray, but the perception of the.
But if we were to end up doing that, having to do that, then we go into the uncertain future of Gannay with our reserves at what may be dangerously low level.
Two things to remember, and that's a very good point, but also two things to remember about reserves. We are working to reduce the reserves. That money that gets pushed, the money that we use for reserves to support the budget, once we stop, make the decision to stop using reserves, we have no way, well, we have to figure out a way then to replace that reserve money in the budget. And we have a lot of intelligent people here, there's not too many ways to do that unless we can get additional state aid to offset stopping of using the reserves or increase our levy to help do that. So it's, and that's in general, when you use your, when you use your reserves, you always have to worry about how do you supplement that money in the following year's budget. So coming kind of back to what.
Yeah, I want to make, I want to make a comment on that, because Ron basically reiterated what I was saying earlier, and, you know, you're trying to tap dance in a minefield here of what, of spending the reserves. I'm far more concerned with spending the reserves to satisfy the community than I am to satisfy the state comptroller. I mean, we have a bleak future coming here with what's going to go on with Gannay. So the last thing I'm worried about is the state comptroller. I'm worried about our community and the perception of our taxpayers. State comptrollers say anything they want to say. I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about making sure that our taxpayers aren't paying too much and that our district is funded. So, again, I don't.
We appreciate that. As I said, that's the kind of dialogue we're looking for right now. It helps guide us.
I'm just, I appreciate the tough position you guys are in, because we're asking you to reasonably spend down the reserves, but at the same time, we're asking you to not spend down the reserves because the future doesn't look too good. So, you know, thank you.
Phil, I think we have a future discussion coming about a reserve just for the Gannay situation. And once we have the pilot, and it indicates that it's going to close, then we can justify doing it. But until we have that, it's not legal for us to do so. But on another note, Town of Ontario did do it. They did establish.
The rules are different.
Yeah, but that's a good point, Matt. That's a very good point.
Would that be a tax tertiary of some type?
No, it'd be a nuclear stabilization reserve is what it's called.
There's actually a reserve name for that?
There's a reserve for that, but for us, we are not allowed to put money in it.
Until it's final.
Until you have documented evidence that you're going to start losing revenue from that. Which.
We think we're getting close to that. If we get a, if we get a four-year extension, it's an indication that they're not comfortable on where they're going to be, and we're hoping, we have both Joe Shields and Ray Wager kind of reviewing that. Establishing it and funding it are two different things. I think we'll be able, and Matt's been a kind of a proponent of this, be able to establish it, at least get it, get it ready to go, and then it allows us the opportunity. And the other thing is, we could, kind of going back to Phil, right, what you were saying, we could establish it, and we could put money in it at, you know, at the risk of being chastised by the comptroller. And what I heard you clearly say is, we don't care what he says. We could do that.
I tried to not say it that bluntly.
But all joking aside, I mean, I do think, you know, we can look into that, work to create that, and then if we do, and again, here's the problem, we, you know, we know we're not going to have the level of fund balance that we've had in the past. But what we do, one of the things that Matt suggested that we talked about, we can actually identify a line item in the budget to, you know, to say we're going to put so much in that reserve, and then we can also say, see what happens at the end, you know, with our fund balance. We are, you know, shooting to spend ninety-six or so percent of our budget, so our fund balance would be a little less than it's been in the past, but if there is stuff left over, that's, you know, that, again, and I think we heard that from the community, use that money to maintain program and very close second to that, stabilize taxes, and that's the message that we heard. So I think they understand, you know, that certainly from the surveys, they felt that was.
But they also didn't say, get rid of all the reserves and spend it down to nothing either. I mean, there's the happy medium there. We just were a little too happy before. Now we just have to find the more even keeled place to be. And I think with, with what you, I can't, I wish I had kept a little tally of how many times tonight you said those really nice words. What were they again, Greg? Within readjusting or whatever?
Conservative.
No.
Right sizing.
Right sizing, that's right. You must have said it ten times tonight, so I can't imagine that our public would be upset that that wasn't there.
And it has been a consistent theme, Carla, and Mr. Carlavati's really been very good, and he used, he coined a term, and I probably can't remember it right now, but what's different this year about our budget philosophy is we are trying to put everything in the budget at the very beginning. In the past, we included things that we needed, but if there was funds left over because of our conservative approach, we would take that money and use it to help us with future needs that were upcoming. Unfortunately, we were criticized, I think from our public a little bit, because they probably didn't completely understand, it sent the perception that we were going shopping, which was never really the case. So, you know, we were still getting what we needed. We got some upfront and some if we ended up good. Now, we're moving it all to the very front so that it's very transparent. That's, that's been the direction from the superintendent from the day he stepped in, and, you know, hopefully you see that reflected in what we're presenting to you tonight.
Again, program drives our budget. We've asked administrators to, also to understand that, take a harder look now because the process where fund balance would be used for appropriate things, but we kind of wait to the end to see it, that's not accepted anymore. So you really have to have forethought in the budget process. And, you know, granted, there may be something, you know, we might have forgot here and there. Within reason, we should be able to fund that. But don't think that, you know, that, you know, you're going to get three staff members or you're going to re-outfit, you know, your stage or something like that without telling us upfront. Number one, and number two, whatever it has to be, has to parallel the board goals, which are synonymous now with the district goals. And, you know, I appreciate you clarifying that, but they're interchangeable now because your board goals are now our district goals. So we want to, so in our conversation, you know, don't ask for something that's not, that we can't fit in that goal conversation, and recognize, ask for it now, because the end of the year, Greg is not going to be writing checks for something that you think, ah, I could use this, I can use this now. That's not going to happen next year. And if you did miss something that's critical, or if we get a special ed change, you know, that's what our reserve or our fund balance is actually used for, so we'll make appropriate use of that. And if you censor something along the way that you missed this year, that's fine. Keep that in mind, keep notes for next year. That needs to be a priority when we think about your next year's budget. And, you know, and we also talked about strategic abandonment. We didn't get as far in that concept as I'd like to, but we did get some administrators saying, yeah, I think we could, you know, this particular aid or this particular technology piece is not doing what we thought it needed to do, so I would, you know, I could probably do without that to help fund, you know, for example, some PE time, because we know we'll get better bang for the buck. And the other thing I think I mentioned, and again, I think in the public forum, and I want to mention it again, is that we've asked for any of the restorations that we've put in here. I don't think there's any real adds, it's nothing really new. There's some restorations. I've asked administrators to make sure that we, that we have a job description, you know, Rob will be working for it. So some of those items you see, an expectation of what that role is and what they're going to do, and a way to identify if it, if it was successful. Did we get what we wanted from those, you know, department chairs? Did it help us move a goal, number one, move better, get our kids to be better today than they were yesterday? So we're looking at a way for assessing and evaluating any restoration that we've, that we put in this budget. And again, I also want to say, this is, this is a first draft. Our goal is to maintain those restorations. But as we take a closer look at revenues, hopefully at our next meeting, you might have some understanding where they are. Some of them may not hold, or we may get direction from you to say that, you know, where we want, where we feel that the community can support the levy, then we'll have to work backwards from there a little bit. So there's still, there's still a lot of flux going on here, but again, I want you to know in the community that a lot of time and energy went in this. There was, I think, a paradigm shift in the thought processes. Greg was saying, Greg has been great retooling, you know, and I think, as you can see, we are in a tight place and we are a little nervous. You know, you always want that right balance, but we, as I said, we have some critical economic challenges that nobody knows what those answers are going to be, so we have to, you know, try to balance all that, so.
So John, I just wanted to, I guess, maybe reemphasize something that a couple of other board members said, is when I see this, and I understand this is a draft and it's in flux, when I see this amount of money coming out of the reserves to fund ongoing expenses versus one-time expenses, it makes me very nervous.
And I appreciate that, because we are also, you know, about that.
I, it's not that I expect it to be zero, but those numbers make me nervous.
See, what we're, what we're hoping to do philosophically is, is shift, you know, slow down the reserve use and shift and offset that use through appropriate levy increases that will kind of keep us stable. But again, we've gone through four or five years, we have the records, without any levy increase. To some degree, while that sells real nice, that probably wasn't the best way to handle the budget. Several other districts would maximize what they could each year in their levy, understanding that we don't have the ability to, you know, to go to that four or five percent when we were in a, when we were in a pinch. And not only that, we want to help stabilize that. So I think we kept artificially low. want to help stabilize that. So, uh, I think we kept artificially low, um, because we, and also the last couple of years because we put reserves in. So now realistically, um, we need to, to, to transfer some of that, that burden. And again, through the state aid, um, you know, taking a look at state aid formula and lobbying efforts to get our, our, um, gap elimination money back, even though that is a one, technically a one-shot deal, it's still a way to help soften the, the, the transition. So we can continue to use any of those revenues to soften our transition. But you, it sounds like you all have a good handle on it a, as well. And I think that's good for us because that's, our goal was to, to educate you to the best of our ability, um, to understand where our challenges are. And there's no easy answers. So collectively, we're, we're looking at it together.
Well, the other thing is, is with what Joe and, you know, what we set as goals and what Joe implemented with the administrators, we've added those. They're going to be there next year. We're not going to be adding, I wouldn't think, another big lump. It's like when you do your own personal taxes. If you have, you know, if you have to pay the IRS, you're going to go in and adjust your withholdings. And then the next year, you'll be kind of flat and be not having to pay again maybe or whatever. And I think it's kind of like the same rationale. You know, we, we added a lot. We found the money, more or less. And next year, those costs hopefully won't, we won't have those kinds of things again.
Right. I don't see, um, restorations, you know, moving forward. I think we, we tried to get to a place to get us to a good operating level, to meet our goals and, and the objectives and the goals. So I think that, that from the expense side next year, that should not, you know, I don't want to be here, but I hope there should not be a lot of add because we tried to do it now and, and, you know, because I think of the, we're in a financial situation to do it right now. It'd be very difficult. If, if we can't get them to hold this year, they're, they're going to be very difficult to move in years coming forward. And if we can get them in this year, I don't think, you know, you're going to have a lot of need for, for much more.
The, the difference is that the following year, we may not have the money in the reserves to transfer out to, 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 in essence subsidize the budget. Even though the budget itself may not increase that much, that gap is still going to be there and we'll have to find some way to fill that gap.
Now, another thing was the, those positions, some of them, if they're successful, may help our students get where they need to be. And then we might not need them anymore. So those parts could be maybe a way to reduce the budget in the future years.
And again, it goes back to the point, how do you know that they work? And, and again, I would be saying, our administrator heard that loud and clear. You need to make sure that we can assess and evaluate the people that we put in to make sure that we're getting our bang for our buck. Because if they're not, then we need to repurpose them. We need to eliminate them or technology or whatever it is if it's not helping us.
But we as a board gave you those goals and we're now giving you the permission or whatever you want to call it, to investigate, see what you needed. You came up with it. And now we need to support your decisions and I do wholeheartedly. And I'm very, I'm very pleased with it. You took and ran with it. And I think it's, 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 you didn't go overboard. And I think it's within reason. And I think we'll be able to, I mean, it's not going to show up next year with test scores. It's going to be down the line. When, you know, I don't think anybody's going to say, "Oh, well, it didn't work and let's pull the rug out in one year." We have to give it a while to see what happens.
Next, next board meeting, I believe it's the 19th, if we want to pick up where we left off. Um, we've just kind of scratched the surface on revenue. So we need to take the revenue conversation. I'm hoping we may have some, something firmed up on the numbers. If not, we're going to have to firm up our own educated guesses. Then we need to run these into projections with some different scenarios on what, um, what different revenue, um, uh, options are from the 4.7. And again, a lot of people don't realize, and I just want to clear that up once, one more time. With the cap, um, the, the, the cap formula, we can have a tax increase that's greater than 2%. Strange way that, you know, I don't even want to pretend to understand how that works, but I know when you plug all those things in, it tells you what your levy increase can be. And, and it oftentimes can be greater than 2%. The perception of the community, for whatever reason, since the inception of the cap, tax cap locked in at 2%. Um, we can go above 2% with a simple majority. We don't need a super majority based on the formula. You need a super majority when you go greater than what the formula allows. Our, our formula allows us to, to raise the levy 4.7%. And what the levy, how the levy relates to the tax rate is based on what the assessments are that we get from the town. And we're, we've got soft figures from a couple towns. We've got hard figures from a couple towns. So we're not comfortable even putting a number out like that yet. But typically, the tax rate runs pretty parallel to the levy rate. Sometimes it's a little bit more, sometimes a little less based on, again, what happens. So, um, those are the kind of questions we have to have. And we also, and we're going to continue working on our budget. I continue to ask Greg to go through, but just like Phil was saying, there will be a point where I'll say, "I'm not comfortable going anymore based on everything we talked about." Um, but that's where we want to pick up next week. And we appreciate any questions you have. Email any questions that if, when you get in the car and you go home and say, "I want to ask that. I didn't ask that." Or, "I wondered about this." Email them. Uh, you can email them to, to me and Greg or email them to Greg, copy me in. Um, if, if you've got something coming home, uh, you know, if, if something comes up. But the next board meeting, we want to pick up from scratching the surface on the revenues to more detail in what it actually means and what some of the scenarios mean and what they make. Uh, so we may give you two or three drafts, which might hold all of the positions we have now. Some, and we might give you a draft that removes some of them. Now again, we're removing from a wish list. So we're not, at this point, we're not removing from, you know, current staff. So we'll give you a couple of scenarios. And if, if somehow we get a nod that we have a gap elimination money, then we'll all be very happy on the 19th. But-
Well, I can certainly appreciate all you've been doing and, you know, working on the reserves. We were at a workshop and there were several, um, business administrators from districts in the city. And I think Ron asked, you know, the comptroller will come in and tell you, "You've got too much." But what is a recommended amount? And they just smiled and said, "They never tell you what you should have. They'll criticize you for having too much, but they won't tell you what you should have." But dimes to donuts, as soon as you fall into trouble, they're going to get after you. "Well, you didn't have enough." So I agree, we need to be very careful not to trim them too low.
Can I just ask, because I'm not, it sounded like we were wrapping up the budget portion of the meeting. Is we have this fund balance sheet? Are you going to go over that?
We've got a couple of quick slides we can do. Yeah, we were kind of wrapping, but there's-
Well, just going back, I, I just, at this stage in draft one, we do have a shortfall of about 455,000. But this is a very working draft, you know, um, process. So, uh, I just wanted to share that with you. And as the superintendent already talked about, by the formula, we can raise our, our levy 4.76%. The 2% is one line of about a 10-step calculation. And the 2% is, it's, I think it's associated with the cost of living. It's either the cost of living or 2%, whichever is lower. So that part of the formula this year comes in at 1.62%. But then it also allows us, as we have new debt service coming on, say our debt service is $4 million and our aid is, uh, $3,500,000, that, that local portion, you can add that on top of the 2%. Last year, we could have went up almost $1 million on our levy. We went up zero. The formula allows us to capture a third of that moving forward. So of the 900-some odd thousand we could have went up last year for this year's budget, 600,000 is gone, gone forever. That's, that's the reality of the tax cap formula. A third of that, you can, you can choose to recoup. That's why our allowable piece is at 4.76%. And currently, just very early, an estimated tax rate is about 4.6% increase on the tax rate. Right now, it'd be about 95 cents. It's not what we're proposing. We just try to give you a, a snapshot of where things are. Um, just quickly, the propositions, there'll be the budget vote, and then we have to reestablish our bus reserve and also ask our voters to approve expenditure for the bus recommendation you heard at the last meeting from Fred. And now Karen, um, one of the things we started last year was, uh, talking about fund balance. We started as early as January last year. This year, with the revised budget process, um, we committed the early stages of the budget process to community input and trying to, um, you know, hear from our constituent groups. Here is our first share of our, uh, proposed fund balance, um, using the same format we've used in the past. And basically, it gives you what we think we're, what we're going to, we estimate to receive in state aid on the top. Um, all those other numbers going down are, uh, estimates of money that'll come in through the rest of the year. You get down to the 20, the $29 million number. We've actually received that money through February 23rd. And so that gives us proposed revenue of 41.7 million. The bottom part works the same way for the expenditures. We're projecting what we're going to spend from now through the rest of the year in the, in the major categories. You see our expenditures to date of 23 million. Um, we have to back out how much we spent on the buses because that shows up in the general fund. So when you do that, it's got our expenditures at about 40.9 million. So early on, we're projecting that we'll have about 790,000 left at the end of the year. Previous years, that number's been much higher. But part of the goal in the corrective action plan was to not have that much left over. So that's why on the revenue side, uh, this is very early. This is an ongoing process. We'll be sharing this with you, you know, over the next couple of months. Um, we're projecting having, for the budget purposes, having a million dollars left that we would use to help fund next year's budget. That's that applied levy offset that you see on the revenue side.
Yeah. And on this, this sheet here, you're showing 2.7 million.
Well, 2.7 was what we used this year. Next year, we're projecting using 1 million. So instead of having 2.7 left like we had last year, we're projecting we're going to have about a million dollars left this year.
Of, of the money we have or the expenses we have yet to pay this year, what's discretionary and what's committed, Greg? For example, teacher salaries, custodian salaries?
Yep.
Peanuts are-
Yeah.
Peanuts are discretionary?
The top things, Ron, are pretty much committed. When you see the miscellaneous, which has a million dollars on it, that's taking our average warrants for the month and just extrapolating that out moving forward. So that's the one that, that, that could shift a little bit. But, you know, our retirement costs, our, our utility costs, our salary costs, our bond payments, tho, those are pretty fixed costs.
Okay.
So-
So that, that number's pretty firm, then, that 700,000?
Yeah, I mean, I-
Yeah, give or take.
Yeah. It'll go up a little bit at the end of the year because people have POs in Clumber. They didn't spend it all. They start liquidating stuff. Um, you know, so I, I'm very comfortable at this stage that we'll have about a million left, but we will not have the 2.7 like we had in the past. But that, part of that's intentional in, in the corrective action plan. But, you know, there's some caution with that moving forward.
Was that improved? Did you take out the 4% that, that's for this year, right?
Yes, the 4% is taken out, Carla. That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Cause somebody just said that, that was last year's, so-
Well, we, it is last year's, but we showed the fund balance as of July 1st. And then the 2.7 is appropriated in August towards this year's tax levy. So that's why, um, it's included in the fund balance number and then it's got to come back out.
So the 1.7 is going to go back in the reserves?
The 1.7 is not in reserves. That's our unappropriated, unassigned fund balance that by law, we're able to hang on to. It's in a bank account. It's invested. Um, but that is not committed to, reserve money is committed to the reserve in which, whether it's T, ERS or liability or workers' comp, it's committed for that purpose. The 4% is uncommitted. So, so if we had a revenue shortfall of $2 million, you could tap into that 1.7 and bring it in to help cover this year's costs. Okay? I know I went over that fast. I apologize. But, um, any questions on anything we've covered? I just want to stress, everything is a draft. You see it in different parts, but I know the superintendent stressed it also, that this is a working document. But we want to show you that it doesn't all, it doesn't always balance in the beginning. It's, it's a work in progress until you guys adopt what's going to be, quickly for the voters.
I, I think I speak for all the board when I say, "Thank you for all the work you've put into this." Um, I've been around schools for a long time and I, I don't ever remember a year in which schools faced so much uncertainty and budget time is what we're facing this year. So we certainly appreciate all your efforts.
One last question.
Yes.
Um, just to put it in simple terms, the 4% is allowable by law. We're going to have 780, well, estimated 783,000. So technically, we really do have 20, or 2.4 million surplus. But of that, that 1.7 is legal to have. Correct?
Well, the 4% is, is surplus over years. That's not accumulated every year. That's, it's shown here that it's in the total fund balance at the beginning of the year, and then it comes out because you're able to take it out. But the only thing, the only part of that that's included in the current budget is, so you're allowed to take 4% of next year's budget. As our budget goes up, that 4% number will climb by 30,000 or 40,000. That increase will be part of what's left over this year. But the entire 1.7 is already there.
Yeah. So Greg, can I just, I want to try and say that, because it's a very confusing point for a lot of people.
Yes.
So there is, I'll call it, an, um, you use, an unidentified, a reserve that is not for a specific purpose.
Correct.
That has 1.7 million dollars in it.
That's correct.
According to what you have written in the documents here, we're not planning on adding anything to that. The complete surplus from this year's budget is looked at being used towards next year's taxes. We, you identified about 783, but you rounded it up to a million when you did the, the other part. So it's, we're not looking at, there's no surplus from this year that we're looking to put into reserves?
No.
Okay.
That's correct.
And I, I think that's what might be confusing to people.
Yes, that is correct.
The other thing I-
Now, things come in better than we expect, then clearly that-
Right. Then that could change, but at this point-
Moving forward through the end of the year. But at this point, you're absolutely correct.
So the other thing I just, I want to say, because I can picture either Mr. Carlavati or Mr. Miller getting a lot of emails about this tomorrow, if people watch this on the web. Um, the 4.6 or 4.59 or whatever the number was that we, you had associated with the 2163 or something around there.
Yes.
That is not a proposal at this point.
No.
That's just-
No.
A visual so people can see what those types of things look like. It is not anything that we're proposing to the public at this point.
No. No, not at this point. We just wanted to give you an idea of, with a conservative approach, if we were to go with the maximum allowable levy that the formula allows, it could have, uh, the impact on the tax rate would be what we showed you tonight. But that's very early and we're just showing that as a maximum amount on the levy. We're not proposing that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
But there is going to be, as the superintendent said, moving forward, you know, I mean, we, in my opinion, we need to raise the levy to cover next year's costs. But then we also have to take into consideration, do we raise the levy more than that, and maybe not to the maximum amount, to start bumping that number up so that when Gne goes away, you're benchmarked at a higher number? Because remember, when you have levy increase that you don't get, that you don't use, you only get a third of it back. The rest of it, two-thirds is gone.
You never get another chance.
You can never get it back.
Yes.
You can never get it back with the 2% formula or the tax cap formula. So that's just moving forward. I think we all want to think about that and, you know, try to figure out what's palatable and, you know, what's the right thing to do for our community. But what's the right thing to do for financial stability? Because I think we have a duty to do that as well. So.
Thank you, Greg.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's our superintendent report, which is Captain Murray, Board Report.
20 minutes, huh?
Yeah.
(laughing).
Under Board Business, uh, the first item, uh, that requires action is, uh, to nominate a BOSI's Board candidate. We have a candidate, Jeanne Durfee, who's, uh, been a resident of Wayne Central for a long time. She's a former Wayne Central School Board member, um, former Wayne Central Vice President and President. She's interested, she's currently on the Wayne Finger Lakes Board and she's interested in running for the board. Uh, can we get a motion to nominate Ms. Durfee? Jeremy and Phil, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, the next, uh, item of business is first reading of Policies 3281 and 7130. Uh, can we get a motion to approve those policies? Dennis and Tim for a second. Any discussion? Karen? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. First reading. Okay. Um, then let's go to the second reading of Policy 7410. Yes. Yes.
Say something about what these policies are on for first reading? So 3281 is the facilities naming policy. We had actually submitted it for first reading once before, but there was a change that is fairly minor, but really needed for clarification that was added, that the policy, that the review board is one review board for the entire district. So that change has been put into this policy, and it's been resubmitted for first reading. The other policy, 7130, that's been submitted for first reading, is actually, was requested that we look at by BOSI's. It's about the entitlement to attend age and residency. And although it looks like a lot of change, it's actually because this one policy has been split into three, so the parts that were removed were actually put into other policies that are referenced at the end. And other than that, the, some of the wording changed, I think for legal reasons, but the intent stayed pretty much the same.
Are there any questions for Karen or the policy committee? If not, then let's go to the second reading of policy 7410. Can we get a motion to approve? Dennis, a second. Jeremy, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And then the last item is to approve our voter propositions. That would be for the budget vote, for the bus purchase and the bus purchase reserve. Can we get a motion to approve? Karen, a second. Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Moving to consent agenda, we have a number of items on the consent agenda. Can we get a motion to approve? Dennis, and a second. Karen, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And we're going to have a thank you letter for the gift to the district. Committee reports. Communications, Jeremy?
Communications met tonight. We've decided we're going to have one more roundtable for the year. We scheduled it for the 16th of April. We're stealing John and Greg's name for the presentation night, and it's going to be economic realities for the district. What we're going to try and do is, since the public here doesn't have the opportunity to ask their questions, we're going to try and have that conversation open up so the public can come and ask the questions about the budget line, maybe questions about the GNA pilot that they might not understand that we can help with. The Lake Shore issue, the possible losing the sales tax, what all this stuff might mean. Instead of sitting there and having to hear it, maybe be able to have a discussion and get some more pointed questions asked, or answered. And we also spoke about inviting John Smith and the, thank you, to have their input, and especially, I would like John, because I still get some of the details of the Lake Shore when people ask me questions about it, and he did a good job presenting to us. So that'll be the 16th of April, 7 o'clock, Middle School Media Center. And our next meeting to, it will be here in the high school on April 9th, and that's just our regular committee meeting at 5 o'clock.
Any questions for Jeremy? Could we go to the audit committee, and Matt?
Sure. The extra classroom corrective action plan, most of the issues have been addressed by the appointment of Lori Bernard as the extra classroom auditor. The issues were numerous and small, and they all built up until the auditor saw them. So we're, we're hoping to get rid of them before the auditor sees them and correct them as they happen. So she's going to take care of that, we hope. Corrective action plan for the 1314 general fund audit is in progress and has one item that remains open. And the corrective action plan for the internal cash receipts audit is complete. We plan to discuss nuclear stabilization reserve at our next meeting on March 26th, and that'll be at 5:30 PM, somewhere on the third floor of OE, I anticipate. And we also look forward to receiving the internal claims auditor report. That's it.
Okay. Policy committee, Karen?
We actually met today, and we will be, I'm warning all of you, submitting a lot of policies for first reading next time. We got, we have a lot of civil rights policies that came from BOSI's that they asked to have updated, as well of a, as well as a couple others we're catching up on. We plan on our next meeting in April, which I think you said the 9th, right? Because we always meet the hour before communications committee. April 9th at 4 o'clock, and we're going to be cleaning up some items where we've asked for feedback on policies from some outside groups, and that will, is, our plan is for that to be the last meeting of the school year.
Any questions for Karen? If not, under board president comments, I have just two comments. First, I'd, I'd like to thank the board. As the public knows, we are in the middle of a superintendent's search. That has proven to be a very time-consuming task. I'd like to thank the board over, over the past week, the board spent over 12 hours interviewing candidates and discussing and evaluation, evaluating candidates and qualifications. And 12 hours in addition to their normal workday is, is a pretty arduous task. So I'd like to thank you for your, for your efforts last week and look forward to the process.
Can we just like hanging out till midnight?
It is true. We were here until after midnight one night. I also found out today that one of our board members has a connection to some of the local businesses, which have sign boards in the community, the automated sign boards. And one of our goals is to, is to celebrate and publicize student achievement. And so it's been suggested that perhaps we should approach these businesses and see if they would, on occasion, allow us to use their sign boards to celebrate student achievements. And I, I think that's a commendable idea, but I wanted to run it past you folks first, so. Can I get a nod or disapproval? Okay, we'll see what we can do to celebrate our student achievement even more than we are. With that, can I get, Jeremy?
Hold on, before we do that, I just had a thought. I don't know the date, but I do know there's somebody in our audience that enjoys going.
Vopro's open house is coming up in the next week or two.
I think it's the 19th when we are meeting.
Is it the night? I, I thought he said it was a Wednesday. Anyhow, if you're interested, we got to watch their website, because I forgot to check the date, and I know it was something we all enjoyed doing, so something we're not going to do as a group, but we are still invited as individuals.
I'll email the BOSI superintendent and try to get the date and send it out in an email to you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, can I get a motion for a German? Carla and Jeremy. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.